Okay. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our March the... April 4th.
Let's open with word prayer. I can't think of a more important time to come before you first and foremost before we do anything else and acknowledge that we need you here with us in powerful ways. We need wisdom from on high. We need wisdom that's not the wisdom of man. We need your wisdom to be imparted to these gentlemen, to others in the room that will be offering positions and advice and counsel. Your word tells us that there's wisdom in the counsel of many. Thank you, Lord, that we have many who can come, who can participate, who can help, who can take responsibilities. You're in complete control and we acknowledge that. But I want to remind myself and others that your word tells us that you cause all things to work together for the good of those that love you and are called according to your purpose. And so we're claiming that privilege, that promise today. And I'm asking you, Lord, to just protect all of us and give us a good sense, Lord, of the peace that passes all understanding in your Christ's name.
Amen.
Thank you, Craig. We don't have any old business, so Craig, I get you up.
Oh, it is me. First item, I think my items, gentlemen, are going to be a couple of housekeeping matters and they are related to the declaration of local emergency that the board made on Monday. These are additional items that would be included within the context of your declaration of emergency. The first item is, in keeping with that declaration that you made on the 16th, this is a ratification and authorization for issuance of purchase orders that are for an emergency purchase of fuel or diesel for the road department, an authorization to pay invoices for fuel and diesel purchased until cessation of the emergency circumstances or 60 days, whichever is greater. This would be an opportunity for us to continue to make sure that we've got the fuel that we need for road department activities throughout the pendency of the declaration of emergency.
So are we sharing that with the sheriff's department?
Uh...
I'm going to defer to my road department?
Yes, we are.
Do we need to say that explicitly or...?
Well, does the chair wish to enter a privilege there to extend that?
Will it be okay if we do it though?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor, say aye.
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 And just for clarity, for Ms. Jessica, the motion is with the amendment that this fuel is both for the road department and for the sheriff's department.
We bought gas yesterday, not at a fuel tanker load, but a ton of mine.
Wish we could do that all the time.
Can we get another tanker load?
I mean, it's something, you know, I mean, I did check on my tankers. So we could be using this fuel instead of store. I mean, I ran a tanker about $1,000 a month. We're saving $1,500 on tanker loads right now.
Right.
If we want to start using, setting a tanker down for our emergency stores right now for a month, and then I get one of the tankers, I think it'll be in the month of our next.
This is just during this emergency situation that we're getting this fuel at this cost.
Yeah, that's right.
No, no, this is, I mean, the gas prices are down there.
Right.
When we find both loads like that right there, you're going to get a better break on it.
Yeah, I just didn't realize that much break.
Like highway diesel, I mean, I priced a tanker load of highway diesel yesterday at $1.33 delivered in my tank. It's over $2.00 that's already given right now.
Right.
You know, so like it's an opportunity, I mean, I'd say bad things going on, but it's an opportunity for us to save money on our budgets.
Mm-hmm.
If we use this wisely and see follow-up.
I don't think that the fuel prices are affected right now. If anything, it's going to make them go up. I think fuel prices are a separate thing than the coronavirus.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest with you, Steve, I talked to fuel center yesterday and I mean, basically we all know what's going on. We've got countries fighting over fuel. We've got fuel. I mean, they're just following market right now. We'll circle us a few of them right now. On that, so a lot of fuel prices are being thrown around right now. It's something to consider, you know, we've looked at some cost savings and stuff like that and me and Sheriff's Department, Jim and Brian talked about it yesterday, you know. But I think tankers, you basically pay for the third one in what you say, you know.
Yeah, and one thing I would just want to add to it, that we make sure we just use that, I mean, go ahead and continue to fill up normally right now and then have that as your reserve, obviously.
That's why I was talking about maybe renting that tanker.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We could be using that as emergency storage if we don't get it. You know, it stays in that in case we do get them now, we'll go ahead and start accessing the little cross fuel we have. We save us over $0.20 a gallon, I think.
Can I, if I may, Ms. President, I'd like to ask a question for, just for clarity. Would it be the position of the board in light of the fact that what Mike just told you about additional capacity was not a part of this particular agenda item? Is it the position of the board that we ought to explore, allow Mike and Ms. Bridget to explore the possibility of securing additional capacity? If so, I would like to revisit this agenda item.
I would like to. I would like for him to at least explore it and figure it out.
Okay, so as a part of the agenda item, you would be authorizing, as I appreciate it, Daniel, your motion would be to revise the prior motion to include the additional storage capacity, either through renting a tanker or through securing other means to provide for additional capacity? I'm assuming, Mike, you're talking about keeping that at the Lancaster facility? Is that correct? All right, Ms. Bridget, can you think of anything else we need to do to make sure that it's okay?
I'm unsure on that, but some of my suppliers, they think it's not, that there's shortage, but there's definitely hauling. And that's what the problem we're having, I did talk several years ago, they called us and said that. But that's the problem. It's not going to be shortages. We just not going to be able to get it.
That's right. So everybody clear on that? So...
That would be my motion.
Yeah, so I think it's probably wise for us to look at this additional capacity in the event that we have continuing hauling transportation issues and not fuel supply issues, but transportation issues. So Daniel's motion is to amend item A, Ms. President, to allow for additional capacity.
The original motion?
Second.
Second by Brad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, second.
Item B is the authority of the county administrator to address any and all issues related to personal protective equipment. Those are gloves, wipes, cleaning supplies, things like that, and the distribution of those, the prioritization of those among and between and by all of the departments and activities of county government. This is a way for us to not get caught up in one department having and oversupplying another department needing. In this respect, there can be a prioritization and a distribution of these without regard to, necessarily without regard to the walls of the departments.
All right, so let me ask a question on this deal here. This puts it back on our county administrator. The motion we put out yesterday or the order that we all signed yesterday, does the wording in that not cover this?
It may, it may, Daniel, but this gives us specific clarity so that if anybody wants to challenge supplies specifically and have that revisit us through a subsequent audit, we've addressed it with clarity right here specifically. I just didn't want there to be any issue.
Yeah, and I guess my only fear was this just puts parameters around. So I know when we write all these emergency orders,
Yes.
they're blanket covered, so you don't have to come back on that stuff. So part of the orders that were signed yesterday read that proclaim that all city and county agencies and departments shall render all possible assistance and discharge their emergency responsibilities that set forth in this city. But it covers everybody to fall inside of that in that blanket deal. I just don't want to get boxed in on this one right here by saying that as long as they don't conflict each other. I guess that's my thing.
So is that the, is that the language within the DR that Mike...
That's the order we signed yesterday.
All right.
So I just don't want to get boxed in conflicting what we signed yesterday. Or not yesterday, Monday, whatever that was.
So what we can do, Daniel, is we can add a sentence to this agenda item that says, "To the extent that this declaration, this specific declaration, might conflict with the declaration that was adopted on the 16th, then this, the declaration that was adopted on the 16th is the item that we're going with."
Yeah.
It will trump this.
Because the way this one goes in, the one we signed and that we submitted yesterday was that anybody that's rendering assistance in any department is covered under that declaration.
Good, good catch.
Yeah, I just don't want to get penciled in on specifics. When we write our general declaration that covers everybody like road, sheriff, everybody is covered on that same one.
If I could be even more specific, I'd love to insert it in here that says, "Hey, whoever's auditing us, we're intending to be covered under the emergency declaration." But, you know, I probably don't want to put that in there, but...
You just want to get the guys in here?
Yeah, well, you know, I just, whatever it takes at this point to make it clear that we're trying to do everything we possibly can under the gun to make this as clean and as simple as we can get it. But, you know, we have to live in a world where the decisions that you guys make under pressure are going to be evaluated under the cold light of simple analysis.
Because my first jump is then why are you only addressing PPE in regards to every other possible responsibility that you put in your emergency declaration yesterday?
I got it.
Because you're only talking about that specific part and you didn't address all the other facets of it.
Yes.
So to me, I just need your wording.
Yeah, look, if you look at it with me, we're also ratifying prior actions. You see that? I think we had some distribution that went on prior to the 16th.
So we should go back.
And this will clean up any activity that predates that.
That part's perfect.
Yeah.
I just don't want to get boxed into a point where every decision's got to be made through our county administrator at 2:00 in the morning.
Understood.
I mean, anywhere, if we need whatever, it can be made on those. If the sheriff needs it right then, he makes the decision. If our U.S.C. directors need it right then, if Harrison needs it right then, they can make that without having to say, "Let me see if I can find Laura Oster to get it done." So that's my thing.
Not a problem. I defer to the wisdom of the board on that. We're offering it up as a ratification of prior actions in addition to being an authorization that's specific to the PPE. So y'all, Daniel, maybe you help compose an alternative motion that does not run afoul of what you're concerned about there.
We can have that. I just want to be sure there's a general understanding that the declaration we signed yesterday, which I think is good, this doesn't supersede that.
Understood.
And requires it only specifically to PPE type things.
So I think that would be part of your motion that to the extent that this could potentially conflict...
Use this one and not that one.
Yeah, to the extent that this one could potentially conflict, the 16th declaration will...
I know we need to ratify, to go back. I'm 100% good with that. I just want to be sure that this right here doesn't box us in on what we signed on Monday. Because Monday's good. I mean, I...
Yep.
So that would be my suggestion.
So why don't you just make the motion and add the additional...
I'll make a motion to approve B, beginning where it says, "Action to ratify all matters below that." Does that make sense? Is that good to start there, Slay? That covers the bottom half of that, because that definitely needs to be in there and that's 100% correct.
Jessica, you okay?
So my motion would be start there at action and work its way down. And then the top part of that, through all that stuff, is covered, in my opinion, if you think it is, covered under our emergency declaration on Monday.
I'm going to work with Jessica to make it clear to any reviewer of our minutes that we believe the action that we took on the 16th covers that top part.
Okay.
But we're adding the ratification as a part of the 16th action.
Because those department heads or from the sheriff, they need to have that ability under this declaration to work immediately as they see fit.
Understood.
All right.
Yep.
So you making that a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, second.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Oster.
Before we go on to this section here, which could take a little while, do we need to address why most everybody's here today and that's what we're going to do in the way of handling the offices? Do you just...
Good idea.
Well, I think we took those, I guess those several orders that were cut. I guess one from Chancery and then one from Judge Agnew. Y'all got one from Justice Court and then one from youth court. Do we need to take any action on that, Slay?
No, sir. Those orders are standing orders that basically we just acknowledge that they are orders of the respective courts that govern court activities. As you guys know, that there is interplay. We provide supplements for county personnel, but outside of a budgetary impact, we don't really get involved with the operation of court system. That's really outside of our...
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, so I guess my question is, how do we want to respond to our employees? Being the half a dozen we have.
So do we need to set some type of policy now?
That's kind of where I was going. Do we want to address that right now while they're here?
That's where we're headed. So just so that it's, that aspect, let's talk about court system first. As you guys know, when orders come down like that, let's say, you know, Supreme Court, Justice Randolph entered an order that says, "We're open for business. We're protecting constitutional rights." That sets in motion some requirements that impact us, personnel on our side. We've got a circuit clerk, a chanter clerk. We've got court personnel, sheriff's officers, a number of county employees that get impacted because they are a part of the process of the courts being open for business. Where you guys have significant involvement with respective employees is in the administrative function. This office, that's where you've got direct employee responsibility, right? But then you've got other departments that are not part of the court system directly. Tax collector's office, tax assessor's office, chanter clerks, land record functions. Those are elected official offices that have their own responsibilities for their employees and those offices and their functions. So you may want to hear from them about what their intentions are and then get as much information as you can to make a decision about the direct employees that you guys deal with on the administrative side.
And that's why Jessica's back there, Renee's here. I mean, I would assume they need guidance from us.
Right. That's what I thought we were here for.
Judge, you told me to come tell you about this.
Tell me about it, Judge. Yes, sir.
What I gave you is just a proposal. Everybody's got problems, but our problem's in the courthouse. We have this great leader who says, "Keep the courts open, but don't get anybody unsafe." That is the stupidest situation I've ever run into. So we got to keep doing things, but we can't have more than 10 people at a time. There's sometime we have 100 over there. So we quit all that. But our biggest problem is we've got a lock on the door and you can't get in there. But the courthouse has, my good clerk ladies, there's five of them that handle my business. We think 3,000 civil cases a year. People want to come in and register to vote. They want to come in and get marriage license. We're trying not to make them have a different anniversary date. So what, I talked to the sheriff yesterday and Barry Vaughn, was he here? Did you hide Barry? Yeah, back there. They got a great little screening mechanism for the jail when they bring in new people to the jail. And I took it and adapted it. And what I'm just proposing to you is, I mean, I can do it by court order, but I don't want to do it by court order if it's going to cause any problems because we have Becky Boyd there. Now she's all for this, but that would be a proposal. We would get our lamps to make up a large sign to go on the front. Have a copy of that on it and then a message that says, "If you can't answer yes to all these questions, retreat, find a phone, call the clerk's office, and we'll make a rank them." Because there's a whole bunch of stuff that can be done without them having to actually come to the courthouse, mail them voter registration forms and all that. So that's all that about. I'm not even asking you to approve. It's missing one thing. It's supposed to say print legal name. I've noticed that handwriting is not the best way to find out who somebody is. But we, the idea would be, that would be sitting out there. We talked to the sheriff yesterday. Our metal detector guys already put a barrier out there so people can't get any closer to him. Right outside that barrier, we just put a tape with blank forms on it and a box to put those forms in. And he would say, "Please fill that out, put it in the box. Did you answer yes to, I mean, no to everything on there? Yes, where are you going?" And send them on down to the office. We'd love to have temperature shooters, but right now sheriff tells me those are a little bit scarce. And I understand about that. But that's what they do to me just about every place I go. I think Mr. Morrison said they do it at DM too. We may eventually get that, or this thing may end before we have to go that far. I'm just concerned about the people in that courthouse that aren't being protected properly as far as I'm concerned, because once they get in there, they go just about anywhere they want to go. So that's just my idea. I'm not even asking you. I'd love it if you think this is okay, but feel free to look at it and if you have some objection, let me know. But I plan to get this up this week sometime. And the sheriff, I think, is okay with this and he's going to put his metal detectors on. And the sheriff and I talked about maybe doing this in all the buildings, all four of these buildings along here.
Yeah, I mean, if you might implement this out front.
I don't see anybody doing it everywhere.
The only thing, so really it's on the honor system, really, that they're going to answer, honor.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Till we get one of them temperature shooters.
If we get one of those, we're in better shape.
And that's the problem with finding them. I've talked to Word, I've even talked to our EMS provider. They can't get them. Everybody's limited on, everybody wants those.
Oh, they're great, but...
My daughter, where my daughter works, in Vicksburg, they shoot her frequently during the day. And anybody that comes in that's delivering supplies, whatever, they do them. I don't know where they got it, but they must've been right on top of the game early or something.
I got Bridget. We got one. How many we got back there today?
Please, just, we, I mean, Bridget's great.
Yeah. Ultimately, that's what we'd love to have. But right now, it is going to be the honor system.
He thanks Bridget for leaving us out.
Oh, yeah. Y'all, like me, you don't count.
I do, too.
The deal about this is it'll at least give us a record of who was there at what time.
Right.
And if we have to try to trace back where the source came from, that'll narrow it down. If it came in on a particular day, we can start contacting those people. And that's why I wanted to print their name and...
Yeah, so they change it to print.
Yeah. But anyway, that's just my, the sheriff, anything to add to it. He's also said he may have a little extra personnel, at least for now, with the school officers that are not committed to the schools. They will come and kind of make sure that happens.
If they want to set this table away, it might be like six feet away.
Right.
They'll fill it out and just leave it there later. They have hand sanitizer, everything right there for they do, give their tag and like...
So the...
Great, whatever we do.
So we need to add this to the agenda?
Yeah, I think we do, Jay. A lot of this is on the fly. A lot of this is my default setting, which is even if it wasn't necessary, but you did it anyway. You hadn't heard anything. So my suggestion would be that you adopt the screening form, the form of this form as presented.
With necessary amendments and we'll add the print on there.
Yes, clarify to include or exclude any information as circumstances warrant and to implement this screening process for each of the county departments and allow them to utilize the screening process. Obviously, we've got to interplay with the sheriff because the way I see it playing out for this building is that you would have a one-stop shop out here in the hallway, right? And that's where it would be controlled. So you don't go to the tax collector until you've cleaned it, completed the form, the assessor, land records, or the board office. You get them all right there. And I don't know what we do with Chancery Court, court records, I would assume, Judge. I mean, the Chancery Court, is anybody from the Chancery Court? There we go, Dave.
Dave, three.
Uh, would, do you believe that the Chancery judges would be in favor of moving to this system? So we'll have to work out...
And I talked to one of them. They've got their little box there and they can stop people before they ever get to that officer in the box.
Yeah, so sheriff, I think our court services people can step up and help us with logistics and making sure we have a good spot. But so it'd be simple enough to handle this process here with one-stop shop right there in the hall. And I think the same can be done for Chancery Court, court records. So you got land records coming here.
Justice Court's the same way?
Right.
They're a little cramped for space, but if they reduce the load of people that come in and they're working on that, it'd work there.
The problem, we're trying to stay within the guidelines of what was laid down last night by the Supreme Court that we remain open in all aspects. We are open, but we're continuing our docket unless it's an emergency for the most part. But nobody's coming anyway. To give you an example, I mean, we had 227 on my docket yesterday. I think 16 showed up. So the general attitude out there is for the public, I'm not coming unless you make me come. So our position is probably not going to make me.
Unfortunately, the folks that know they've got bad news waiting for them on the other end of that meeting, they're probably out to stay home. I think what we're seeing, though, like in our tax collector's office with respect to tag renewals and licensure and other issues is we're continuing to see a steady flow of people. Am I right, John?
This is the last two weeks of homestead, so everybody's coming in.
Yeah.
And the same thing with car packs. They're coming in, they're in the month.
Yep.
Ours had to stop.
I mean, it's, I won't say busy, but for this time of year, if everybody's on work, why not come in while you're losing?
What can we do about getting them some gloves?
Well, you just did that.
This is one way to handle it, stop the people and let them come in one at a time. And that's what we're doing right now. We're only, every one person in the office.
Right, right.
It's having to disinfect the wipes and all that kind of stuff.
Yep.
I'm just curious, John, you might know something about this. Collector's office in Richland is just doing drive-throughs. Well, how come, how come we can't?
You couldn't get them off. Women couldn't wear gloves. Or if they have a drive-through. Our biggest problem is with the three offices. We can do a drive-through in Richmond, we can do a drive-through in Brandon, but you shut your Flowood office down completely because there's a drive-through office. So my concern, no matter what, I mean, I'll do whatever. We can keep it open and whatever, but we've got 20-something employees that, what do they do all day? I don't need, you know, we come up here, we can, I mean, we've got a rotation where we can make it work, where we can keep people busy. They wouldn't necessarily, they wouldn't need the whole 20-something. I can come here. We wouldn't need every single employee all day, every day. So that's just kind of, that's where I want you guys feedback too, in particular, because especially with the Flowood office, I say shut her down. We can take precautions here, especially with this implementation. Richland's not a problem. We can handle that. This office, we can kind of rotate people through it. I don't need 20-something people here all day, every day, especially if we're only allowing one or two in at a time. So that's where I really need the guidance and feedback from you guys because do I send them home? I can find them a few projects for a week. But as we all probably really know, this is going to last longer than a week. So it's, you know, these first few days, we can make work. It's, as this goes on, what is the desire?
So you're intending to leave the Richland office open?
For right now. It's just drive-through. They, we actually still have two people down there. Because they're kind of passing stuff back and forth to where they can, but I mean, really and truly, we would limit it to one at that point when we really don't need. Right now, they've got some stuff that they can be working on.
So how many you got over at Flowood, four?
Um, and a half.
And a half. A little pressure how you do that?
That's all, person, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, but really, I mean, they have no other option other than straight face-to-face. So if we're really trying to limit, my gut instinct is shut her down. The same thing with my girls here. They, y'all, I mean, we've been full these last three days. And it's, you know, at times, there was a line. So it's not that they're just one-on-one coming up to the counter. It's that they're all huddled together as they're waiting. There is no distance between the girls and the customer. There's just really no way to do that. Some other counties have talked about putting up Lexi glass screen up, but then you're talking about days. You know, so for an immediate, I love the implementation of this, but again, from a staffing pattern, I don't need them all sitting there all day.
So it's troubling to see, it's troubling to see as many as 20. I walked by the other day, Caroline, I think you can attest to it. There's probably 25 people standing in the cattle gap.
Correct.
And so waiting to be served in your office. So I think a policy that would potentially push whatever congregating there would be potentially to outside the building is better than congregating inside the building. Yeah, and my thought process, Jay, my thought process behind that is if people drive up into the parking lot and see a line outside, they may decide that they can come back later.
Yeah.
Or go through the drive-through.
Or go to the drive-through.
And that's another thing that I'm really going to start trying to push, especially social media on the website. I mean, there's, so much of this can be done online or via mail. It does not, now title work, has to, obviously, original documents. There's no way around that. But even the state shut down there. I mean, they're mail only. So I think we've got some wiggle room. The other question that is obviously going to come up, and the state has, and I'm just throwing this out here for y'all. It's not your decision, but penalties and extra fees that will come of this when people have not handled the business, that will have to come from the state. That is not you guys, but you guys might get some of the backlash depending on what the state...
Yeah, because right now, everybody's in jail. You guys are now, right?
Well, if they don't come in. Right, right. So now property taxes, that's a whole other. They had, February was it. So that shouldn't even come into... So that, that shouldn't even come into play, but, but car tags and, and, um, like I had a guy recently who purchased a car. Couple of days ago, but then went out of town, but then decided to self-quarantine, so he hasn't done everything, he, you know, I mean, there's just. There's just a lot of, a lot of the process.
Tag relate?
Do, yeah, yeah.
Well, I think we could work around that.
Well, and the state will initially probably push something.
We don't have that choice.
Yeah, we, y'all don't have the choice.
Buy your tag late?
Yeah, that'll have to come from the state, and again, that's where that's not your decision, I just want y'all to be aware of what some of the backlash will be.
Let me say one other real quick thing and then I get out of here, uh, it doesn't affect her, but the sheriff's done a fantastic job, as always, getting ahead of this thing. And we talked about this, and he's gonna support this whole idea, but I, I just want you to know, this isn't it. He's got, we've got something called a summons, it's been in the law since two thousand seventeen. Where instead of arresting somebody, put them in jail, make them bond out, you give them a summons and say you go straight to court. And if you don't show up to court, then we're gonna put you in jail, that can buy us a lot of time, and I think if people are working on that. To use that kinda thing, because folks, I'm telling you, there's very few things that are as poorly, uh, managed. As our state statutes on bonds, I mean, it's just a, it's a mess, but if we can avoid that step. For most of them, and that's been the law on marijuana since seventy-two, when I was a narcotics agent. If you got less than ounce of marijuana, they write you a summons and say come to court and pay your two hundred fifty dollar fine, and that's the end of it. So there are a lot of things like that that he and his lawyers are working on, that kinda behind the scenes y'all never see, but, uh, and the investigators. They're turning a whole lot of people out on bill releases, and then they'll eventually come to court, but if they, you know, if you got. Gram of meth, go get yourself treated, he's not, he's gonna go get you more meth, but that's okay. So anyway, I just wanted to tell you, that's something the sheriff's office is doing, and it's been a big help to us.
Yeah, on Monday, I sent out a, an email to all the chiefs. Uh, the municipalities and other heads of lo- local law enforcement, highway patrol, gaming fish, reservoir patrol. Uh, asking them to consider measures, just like Judge McDaniel was talking about, that we're working on, other alternative methods to just. Locking somebody up on a basic misdemeanor charge, um, so we're trying to control the jail population and. During this, especially during this time, uh, by asking for their help, they've been cooperative, um, gotten good feedback, so, uh, that, that's just another measure. We're taking up.
In addition to this, something we're taking, the only thing we'd like to take are violent felonies, invasive violence, DUIs. So if it gets to a point where you say, hey, we're not taking them, but they're banning them, we're gonna start doing the temperature now, Bridget got us that monitor, we're gonna start taking the temperature in the salad bowl. Before they walk into jail, if anybody's coming to jail.
Yeah, and, and not to get you too deep in the weeds, but, uh, Judge Aggie back there could tell you. One of the problems is, these things he's talking about, when a troop right there stops somebody and writes him a ticket, he puts a court date on there. That's based upon when the justice court's gonna be open. Well, between them and the deputies and everybody, they may sign up two hundred people for a given day in court. And that's the kinda thing they're trying to deal with is, how do we get the word out to these people, don't put any date before X on there. So there are a whole bunch of things that we're trying to sort through and keep y'all from having to deal with, but I just admire what everybody's done so far. Especially in the sheriff's department to get that done, so, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else for me, Sheriff, I'm gonna get out of here.
Uh, I guess one thing, curious, and I don't think, I don't know if you got any part of that, would be as far as our, our volunteer fire department, uh, firemen. What can we do? You wanna bring that up?
Jared, I think that's coming, uh, if, if we hang on to that, um, but as it, as it relates to the buildings. And the operations of our, of our departments, I think we, we probably are at a point now, at least I think, I'm sensing that you guys may be at a point now. To speak on the issue of some sort of approach here that makes sense, and it seems to me it makes a lot of sense to have a station. In each of the locations staffed by court service, sheriff's office personnel. Who can administer the form and give guidance with respect to limiting congregating activity, right? Uh, and, and, and implement something, let's give it a shot, see if it works.
As to the courthouses, we all learned from Buford Pusser, he can put us all in bathrooms if we want to.
That's exactly right, he controls it.
Of the courthouses, and that's why I've been coordinating with him, now as to this building, I have no idea who's in charge of that one, but.
Sheriff provides security to this building, and so it's, uh, it really falls under the purview, it's not responsibility, it's purview and jurisdiction. He's gonna implement whatever these guys decide would be.
A little bit.
So, uh, I, I kinda like the idea of us having a station in these locations, but we wanna give flexibility to the departments, I think. We wanna give flexibility so that they can not be burdened or hemmed in with rules that do not work for their, for their functions.
Right.
So let your department heads make decisions outside of how many are gonna come in at one time, let them decide who gets to see them. How they see them, whether they're gloved up or not, let, let the department heads run that part of the operation, let's just provide them with a. System that sort of provides a little bit of crowd control.
Yeah, I, I just wanna weigh in on one thing, I don't mean to be the bearer of bad news or, or the anti-optimist, but under the circumstance, I've been researching this a lot. I've got some friends in medical, and, and just as of yesterday, a report was done that says it is airborne to a certain extent. Uh, it lives on stainless steel for seventy-two hours, wood for two to four hours, um, so the bottom line is. I, I, while I think these are great ideas to catch the people coming in who are symptomatic. There's clear evidence out there that there is an incubation period that you can be asymptomatic, in fact, many children, the big thing that I've been told by my physician friends is. We're not trying to protect the children from the virus, we're protecting grandparents from the virus, from the children, if they'll get it, carry it, come home and never have it. So the stations are great for identifying those who might be symptomatic, but if you're asymptomatic. And you walk in and you stand face-to-face and it's over here, you get your tag, and it's got a distance of now they say eight to ten feet. Because it's potentially airborne, uh, we're, I mean, we're not doing any good unless we have something on that employee, some mask, gloves, something. Or do like many other employees of, uh, offices and we go to a window unit only, the problem, we were talking about that yesterday is. People were calling, certainly we wanna remain open to take payments, some people make payments by cash, some people, I'll call that. Some people make payments by cash, some people make payments by, uh, by virtue of online, and if you do it online, that's fine. If they, they're calling and asking Jessica, if I've got a ca- a cash payment, what do I do, so right as of now, we send somebody downstairs, we take the payment. We go back upstairs, we get a receipt, we come back downstairs, but whoever is actually taking the payment is still in, in, in jeopardy in that sense. So one of the things that we're interested in, I know we have a window over here, is there any way possible? That we could put into service more of these windows, I know the county is, and, and over here is using these windows, but. Is there any way we could use these for multi-purpose activities as opposed to just for, let's say, tag and land and that type of thing? Could we also use it to take court fees or payments, or, or are we just dig- digging way too deep in the woods?
I think your line is gonna get really long for one window.
Uh, I agree, but I honestly think that in the next fifteen days, uh, what you're probably gonna hear is. Uh, it, it's in, in the past seventy-two hours, I think, ain't that right, Paul, it went from a hundred to fifty to ten. According to the CDC in the exposure rate, so I think what you're gonna see within the next seventy-two to. Hours or three or four days is you're gonna find that they're gonna say something along the lines of, we really don't want you going anywhere. And so where does that put us as far as exposure, we're kinda kidding ourselves if we say, well, he didn't have a temperature, so we let him in, we did a hearing with him. And vice versa, or we let those people up to pay because they didn't have a temperature, I mean, and there's no masks, there's no gloves on the internal. You know, people inside the building, I, I just, it seems to me like.
Here's the deal, just because we can't do everything, doesn't mean we shouldn't do something, that's the bottom line of this, nobody. Pure all at all.
Yeah.
But it's something.
But what I'm saying is, can we also say, can we make part of that, if you're dealing with the general public, I think it would be wise to say. We're gonna do those screenings, a hundred percent agree with that, and that takes away at least the ones that are known potential carriers. But I still think we need, and we don't have the money in our budget to go buy gloves and masks for our people, is what I'm saying, so. If, if we need gloves and masks, I mean, are we gonna be able to get that for our people who are there every day still meeting with people?
I think we're ready to do it, but.
The, the problem is, even if you don't have money in the budget, we're willing to go ahead and buy them anyway, but our problem is we can't get them. We can't get them, we can't get hand disinfectant, we can't get masks, we can't get gloves, we just can't get it.
Well, again, there's another, I mean, for example, if we provide them self-aggressed envelopes, postage prepaid, to give to these people. So you send your money in, they wanna all do that, but some of them will, and that'll keep them, cause I'm telling you. We have them come in there wanting to pay their criminal fines, lordy mercy, I don't know what some of them do for a living, but it smells bad. There's all kinda folks that come up in there, so anyway, like I said, we're just looking for things that might lower the risk a little, and that's, that's all we're trying to. Oh, I talked about.
Don't we need to be spreading ourselves out?
Thanks, I appreciate y'all giving us some time to talk about these things and I'm gonna get out of here.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for inviting me.
To kind of put a bow on this particular discussion, we need you guys to, to consider. Uh, do we go ahead and implement some sort of screening, do we use the form?
Yes.
And do we make that applicable for each of the county departments, uh, and allowing, obviously allowing the department heads themselves to make decisions. As it relates to interaction of their personnel with the public, we'll do the screening on the front end, and then they need to take it from there. Does that seem reasonable, so I would want that in the form of a motion to implement that policy.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Hi, motion by Jared, taken by Steve in the discussion, all in favor, say aye.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jared, approve.
Second.
Saying by Steve, all in favor, say aye.
I just got a suggestion, I was sitting there thinking about the, the guy that's out front, the security guy, everything would be kinda coming toward him. Would it not be, could we not have something like, uh, that ribbon stuff that would send them to one spot, where everybody wouldn't be standing on his counter. Filling that out, blowing on him the whole time.
That, that, that's one, we've already got that an hour, and that needs to be, and everyone to keep them waving that, uh, at, uh, service at the court officer.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, and Craig, the only thing I wanted to say, Slay, the only thing I wanted to say was, we got Jessica and Renee in here from our office, and I guess. With you guys on our offices, on our employees, do we wanna offer them up some suggestions or advice on. Their employees, on staffing and rotation, in, in addition to this, this is good, but for our employees, while we have them here, I know Jessica, she, Renee, Laura. Just so they're on the same place.
Uh, you guys wanna weigh in on what you feel like you need some additional guidance on how you deal with your personnel?
Can, can I say something first?
Sure.
Just real quick as I'm leaving. Ed, y'all may not know this, but way before we had that flood in January. I saw him coming out of that office there with a roll of maps under his arm, and I just said, what you doing? He said, we're gonna have a flood, and I'm gonna see what the seventy-nine floods look like, he spread them out there, he had the seventy-nine flood footprint. And he had the footprint of what we done since then, and I want you to know something, there's not a lot of EOC folks that would go, they just wait and let the state tell them what they're gonna do. And I just, uh, I swore me the other day as one of them, uh, reserve employees, and that's what made me think, y'all need to know about stuff like that. I mean, so I commend him for that, I'm sorry, Ed, didn't mean to, uh, embarrass you, but.
Who's Ed?
Hey, I like, I like embarrassing, he's a good guy.
He did a great job.
That's, that's his code name. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
You've been running alias Mike for a long time.
I've stayed out of trouble since two thousand twelve going by the name Ed, cause sheriff didn't know who I was, and now the cat's out of the bag.
Yeah.
That's porn now.
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, who said that?
Sheriff, when, when, when he wears that tight shirt, when he wears his tight Spandat shirt, that's when he's Ed, when that medium's working, yeah, the medium's working, he's Ed. He's, he's Mike today, he's got his golf shirt on. Renee, do you need anything, I, I, that's what I was, main reason, what, what do you need for your office? Slay, do you have any?
Good point.
Slay, you got any?
Did you hear that?
I, I, I didn't hear that, we, we got six issues at once, so forgive me for that.
Basically, Renee was giving us an update on her office area, and some of the inspectors are going out, are worried about going into people's homes, doing utilities inspections and stuff like that.
Right.
Could we, if we put that on, she's asking, could we, like, put it on hold some?
Absolutely, um, and, and that can either be, uh, Renee's the department head, uh, she could do it. I would prefer that you guys speak into that issue, I think Renee is asking for you guys to give her some backstop on this. But my suggestion would be that we suspend any in-home inspection requirement. If they're occupying the home, if it's an occupied dwelling.
We go inspect them so people can move in.
All right, well, yeah, if they're not occupied, then I'm not sure what we do.
Yeah, but sometimes people are in those houses, um, you know, when they get there, they're already occupying it.
You're talking about occupied ones?
Sometimes people are already in those houses when we go out.
Jay, sometimes they're already in it, sometimes.
They're already in there sometimes, and they were just telling me an example where they went in, uh, and there was a lady in there who was coughing and carrying them while they were there. You know, it just puts them, um.
Yeah, makes you think, yeah.
Well, I, I, if we just stopped doing inspections, though, people aren't gonna be able to get their fire cut on, they aren't gonna be able to move in their house.
I'll be able to sell.
From one person to the next.
Uh, I mean, what's the suggestion on?
So we, we just need to figure out some guidance that we can give on that, and, and give Renee the, the backstop.
Go ahead, you know.
Yeah. And I think, I think it almost needs to be a case-by-case situation, that if your inspector shows up on the scene or at the location. And feels like that it's, he didn't feel comfortable about going in, then stop and come back, and he has to get another game plan, I don't know what the game plan would be.
I don't either.
Uh, but i- if they don't feel comfortable going into it, for whatever reason, then.
Ask them to leave, ask people that's in the house to leave and let the inspector do his job.
Yeah, dominated house, I guess, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a point, could you just say, huh, you got to leave the house?
Or wait outside.
Wait outside, and I mean.
That limits their personal contact. Exactly.
Nothing personal, but, you know, we're trying to be precautious.
Feel like that would work for Renee?
Both sides.
Man, can we, uh, can we post all of our buildings?
I know.
Just put signage out front that says, you know, if you can do anything online or through the mail.
Or phone, or, yeah.
Wish Chuck was here, he could put in the papers, too.
But we'll, uh.
Write up on it.
We'll, we'll get word, we'll get word, Chuck. Yeah, we can, we can take care of posting some sort of notice, I can work with Ms. Laura on language that should be appropriate for that purpose.
Even on the website, stuff like that?
We'll get it on the website, and we'll get it, uh, yeah, and I think, you know, we, we put some information already out on the website, I mentioned that, just. For the purposes of the record as well, that there's, uh, a lot of information that's already contained there, so, but we'll make it clear, try to make it as clear as we can on the website.
Get put on there, you know, uh, the, the link to go pay car tags, just right up front.
Right.
The front door.
Right.
That way they don't have to come in the building.
Yes, and, and just for the record, that information is already there, so we're really just talking about highlighting and prioritizing information that's already there.
Post it on the door and something big, and maybe say, something about if you can do, you can do some of this, uh, to help your lives. Make things safer.
For everybody.
For everybody, yeah.
The main thing I wanted to convey to you in here on the board meeting was, I want, I want you to be able to have the discretion to make the judgment decisions that you need to make. For the safety of the people in your office.
Yeah, that's right.
So don't worry about coming to the board, I guess is my point, to have you here and Jessica's here on the same point, and, and Bridget with your office. To do the things you need to do in your judgment at that time, without having to worry about. To do the things you need to do in your judgment at that time, without having to worry about coming to the board to do it. If you gotta make a call on an inspection or something like that, then you make the call on the safety side. Same way with Jessica's, and even in your office, in dealing with purchases or whatever. Jessica, if you're good with that, I know you got a different situation, too, on the same point, so.
Right.
For anybody that, that deals with the board as their oversight, my take is, and I'll let the other board members weigh in on their opinion, but you're empowered with your authority to make the decisions on the safety side of your office, on what you think, I mean, staffing, whatever it is, so that's my take.
And our girls, our girls are at the very front. I know you probably give them some thought, but everybody walks in, bam, delivers right to them, you know? Some thought, maybe they leave it in the hallway. I mean, I don't know what to do.
So we're gonna have the screening up front, Jared, for this building, so I think that, that upfront screening, they're closed at the entry door, is going to alleviate some of the, the potential of multiple visitors in one location at the same time over a lengthy period of time. At least that's my hope, that we can push some of the congregating activity outside.
Right.
Okay, so that's kind of the idea behind that, so I, I think we'll alleviate some of the larger issues inside this building by implementing that screening procedure. And that hopefully will translate into other buildings across the campus and not just this building. So that's kind of the idea behind that. Uh, we, we, we really won't know until we get into it. So that you also are up to speed, uh, Paul Holly just shared with me that the House passed sixteen seventy-four, which is the, uh, that's the statute that, uh, that frees up, uh, counties, municipalities, school boards to provide, um, for at-home work for employees, uh, and also for some form of furloughing of government workers, if that becomes an issue, while still offering those employees what they're referring to as administrative pay. That's the House side, it's passed, according to what we saw. The Senate has a companion bill that I think is identical.
It, it's there this morning.
Yes, and so that's gonna have to be acted on. Obviously, that's gotta go to the governor to sign it. So none of that's official yet. We think there's a high likelihood that that's gonna pass, but that will free up and eliminate the concern that I addressed with you guys on Monday, which was being accused of uh, making an illegal donation by paying people.
Motion to allow staff members who have children at home, or if they feel ill, to leave, right?
No, you don't need a specific motion to do that. I'm suggesting to you that you allow your department heads and your elected officials to make those calls. You guys need to address the administrative function of the Board of Supervisors, because those are your employees. Y'all can address that, or you can instruct your county administrator to make those calls. The only reason I bring up the state law is that it eliminates the problem that I saw.
Right.
Which was the illegal donation issue. That, assuming that legislation passes as we anticipate, that will not be an issue. And then it just becomes, how do you want to implement that? Who are the employees that are gonna be deemed e- essential, critical, whatever? Uh, and how are you gonna, how are you gonna structure that and make that appropriate across the board? I, I don't know that you've got a choice other than allow your elected officials and your department heads to make those calls with respect to their department.
So if we have individuals that go home for being sick, are we gonna request doctor's excuses?
I, I mean, my answer to that's no. It's, I mean, you're gonna know all this stuff coming through, um, the issue today. Legislation is gonna be done today, because they're going home. They're closed.
Right.
After they get done with this deal, so that'll be on the governor's desk by today. The issue is, you got people feeling those symptoms. The, the directions from the State Department of Health is saying, send them, let, make them stay home. The same guidance on, from other folks are saying this isn't a leave time by, state government employees aren't leave time bounded by it. So state's not allowing it to happen, not allowing you to charge leave time for it, or just send you home on those symptoms.
Yeah.
That's where you're getting at, though, huh? If somebody wants to go home.
Well, and I guess, I guess it's just kind of more of a, a personal ethical type deal, but they're, they don't want them overloading the doctors' offices and clinics, because they're in it right now, and they're closed.
All right.
So I mean, it, I don't, I don't think, I don't think you can regulate it.
Yeah, so where there needs to be, uh, a real good understanding, I think, and clarity for you guys is that there will be some functions, I give you the court system, where there will be county employees who have no choice but to work.
Yep.
Okay, otherwise the court can't function in accordance with Judge Randolph's order. So the, uh, this is not going to be across the board, and there may be some lack of understanding on the part of employees in various functions, some of whom are necessary and have to work, and then others who are not. Yeah, obviously sheriff's situations.
Down their court systems. There's some counties shutting them down. They're, they're not even operating that.
So Judge Randolph's order retained the ability of the local judge to make specific calls with respect to docket, okay? And I think what you find in some places is that some judges have taken that liberty that was provided and have run with it, and they've just simply shut down an entire docket. And if they are not gonna, if they're not gonna convene any case for the next thirty days, you don't need a circuit clerk to appear before court.
Right.
There is no case.
All right.
I'm not saying that that order is valid, and I'm not saying that that particular jurisdiction is not gonna get hit at some point with some sort of potential constitutional claim of some kind. I, I just.
Just don't know.
I offer that as additional thought.
So, oh, you know, as we go on, we're not gonna meet again for a couple weeks, are we gonna need to recess again to come back?
Just any event?
That, that's up to y'all.
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea, just in case.
Well, I talked to Scott Monday, uh, have you got something set up now where someone can work from home?
I do.
Okay, so we can have that capability if someone can log in from their house, they need to do some work if it gets to that point? So other than that, we need some gloves and mask in a bad way.
So does everybody.
Didn't we get some gloves?
Okay, but hand sanitizer, mask, no, we just can't get.
I'm pretty much taking whatever they can get.
I did have one thing yesterday, and I guess I need to bring it up, like the sheriff, that one thermometer that was in Jackson, we finally got, um, they would take the P O, I had to have a credit card immediately, did you use a credit card? But stuff like that, it was merciful, we had to get it, because everybody was gonna be gone, um, I don't know how to handle stuff like that, because we are open, so we have to have P Os, but that was one of those situations, we didn't get it, and they'd all have to do it. We're just entering it on here, too.
Right.
Or to, to pay the car and do this.
We're gonna, we're going to have to ratify some things, guys, just word of warning. We're gonna have to ratify some things as we move through this. Stuff that we think on the front end were covered by our emergency declaration, but you see how the bits and pieces of this get tedious. So we're gonna probably be doing a lot of ratifying.
There's no question, no question. All right, I wanna hit, Mr. President, you want me to talk about the EMS side of stuff just for a second? All right, so one of the things that's right now inside of our contract is for our EMS providers, and I got Grantham here, I think Grantham's here, yeah, there he is. Um, one of the things that's in there on emergency response is we require our ambulance provider to provide ALS response countywide on all nine-one-one calls, right? One of the things that's gonna happen to us statewide, and this has been well before this virus happened, there is an advanced life support shortage of employees. So we're limited on the amount of advanced life support guys that we can put on scenes.
Right.
So what happens is, there, there's two types of calls basically that come out. There's a priority one type call, and there's a priority two type call. Uh, the priority one type call is your, um, cardiac arrest, trauma calls, stuff of serious nature that takes would probably, uh, need an advanced life support person there. Priority two calls are your stomach hurting, fever, coughing, things like that. That can allow a basic response guy, a basic life support guy to handle that type of call. Our issue is right now that the moment people, these responders become contaminated, we could possibly lose that responder. So if we continue to allow Pafford to only, or require them to respond ALS type responses on all priority two calls, they're gonna run out of ALS support. They're not gonna have enough people. So we want to amend it, and I'm gonna let Brian clean me up here, but we, we want to amend that issue during the state of emergency to give Brian the authority to work with Pafford, this is gonna be my motion, for Brian to have the authority to work with Pafford to adequately staff our emergency response medical side, uh, on how they staff their vehicles. If Brian deems it necessary that they can respond ALS in this area, in this type of call, then Brian's got the authority to do that. If he says no, I, I gotta have ALS on this type, then Brian's got the authority to do that. This is a provision from our contract that's there. Uh, we've spoken to Pafford, they're in agreement to working with Brian on this, but we need to make those adjustments so we don't lose the capabilities of having ALS responders in this county.
Well, if it's already in the contract, why do we need to do that?
Because it's in the contract saying they have to give ALS response.
Said there was a provision.
No.
We, I'd like, my motion's gonna give them the provision, to give Brian the authority to say, I can adjust the response calls on the type of emergency.
Just through this.
Just during the emergency, and then we come right back to normal. But he, Brian needs that ability, that two o'clock in the morning to make a decision, and I can staff these calls with basic life support guys rather than advanced.
Add it to the agenda.
Yeah, so that's my motion, add that to the agenda. Did I say the motion the way you want it?
Yes.
Okay.
Before you finish your thought, Jared had raised a question about our volunteer guys.
Yeah.
Daniel, do you, can you address that?
Yeah, I wanna tag the same thing in that we're gonna do with the ambulance service to Brian and Word on our fire department responses. So one of the things, I spoke to the sheriff last night on some of the dispatch stuff, on not allowing our first responders where to be sure they're notified of that priority two type call, the stomach ache, difficulty breathing, that they don't have to respond to. Pafford has agreed that they'll take the call. Maybe instead of the fire department getting there in the first five minutes, they may be waiting seven to eight minutes for an ambulance. But they're gonna take the responsibility of that priority two call and not jeopardize our responders to being contaminated on that.
Right.
So this would also give Brian and Word the authority to make those adjustments to the dispatch of our county volunteer departments at the discretion of the type of call that comes in. It's gonna be kind of a reverse dispatching type deal, all right? So in order to make those medical calls on the dispatch side, what's gotta happen is you've gotta have what's called an E M D dispatcher, emergency medical dispatcher. That's gotta have med control authority to do that. Pafford has that, so it's gonna be kind of a reverse dispatch where it goes to Pafford when a call comes in, then sent back to the sheriff's office, and then that goes out to our volunteer departments. So the sheriff's agreed and talked to those guys last night to allow that system to happen. That's gonna be a great thing for our responders, to keep them as safe as possible and limit to contamination. That's the two part of that.
Yeah.
Slay, did I say all that?
Yeah, I think, uh, the, the reason I want you to go into that is that there, there are two motions. Why don't we just add them both? And then we can act on them separately.
Once for our volunteer, or our countywide responders. So, uh, so those would be my motion, those two add.
Add, add those two items.
Add those two items, Daniel. That was second.
Second.
Second, Jared, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
So a motion to approve both of those items, one for Pafford and one for, uh, the volunteer response.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion by Daniel, taken by Jared, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
That was good the way you want it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. President, for the, for the record, too, and I, I, I do appreciate Brian being here to address the, the emergency medical side of this, but I think it gets confusing a lot of times for our constituents, so while I've got, while we've got a record that we're building on this, I wanted to make a point, and that's, uh, to clarify that our volunteer fire guys respond to medical calls. A lot of people don't know that.
Yeah.
Uh, so we roll those guys out for all manner of emergency response, not just fire. So what Daniel has just done, and what the board has approved, is setting up a situation where we can have better control over what our volunteer fire guys are getting exposed to on the med side, since they're responding, so that we don't lose them on the fire side.
Yep.
It's critical that we continue to have volunteer fire guys who can respond to fires. So just because we're dealing with all this virus business doesn't mean we're out of the fire business.
And, 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 and our, and our fire business will still cover cardiac arrest, uh, any kind of trauma, those things like that.
That's exactly right.
Also, not just include on that motion was not just volunteers, but county department, reservoir is not a volunteer department.
Well, it goes without saying that.
Countywide departments.
Man, our volunteer folks are, are absolutely critical to our emergency response system. So we, we need to continue to appreciate them and try to protect them any way we can. We gotta have them.
We don't need to redo that motion.
County, county departments.
I'm just adding that in there.
County departments.
Okay.
Good, Tommy. That is?
They did on that?
That's what I got.
All right.
All right, thank y'all. You don't have to leave, I'm just saying thank y'all all for being here.
Leave our old rest of our agenda. Uh, Ms. Loester?
Uh, first, first item we have is, uh, discussion of potential action on amending the board order date February fourteenth, allowing supervisors' truck to be purchased by two quote or state contract method.
All right, have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Taken by Brian, any discussion?
I would, the one thing I was asking, the two quotes, or those two quotes still within the, I guess, say, state? The things that the state would be on state contract, you know, since, well, fair.
Not necessarily. If you have, it could be, it could be, but it's not necessarily. By going to state contract, you're, you are limiting on what you can get as far as any kind of option, plus your time, your window.
The only, only, okay, the only reason I, I said that, I don't wanna do anything that we might get audited.
No, 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 you're perfectly fine, this is long as you have the authorization and you do two quotes, there's no issue whatsoever.
Okay, cuz that.
We wanna make sure that we get vehicles that suit the needs of the users, and what we find unfortunately is that when you look at state contract, you're, there're gonna be problems getting the options that are required, and the state contract does not allow you to deviate.
From those options.
For each individual vehicle. You gotta get exactly what they expect.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't want a whole bunch of bells and whistles that they, that the auditor would go, wait a minute, what do we need all this stuff for?
No, no, you're, you're. These are basic options that really are needed.
That's really, I thought, when we said state contract, that was the thing that I thought we'd be protected for.
Your time, your timeframe is different.
This is cleaning up the record to make it clear so that purchasing administration doesn't get into any issue. It, there would be an audit issue if we took action that was outside the scope of what the minutes said, so we're just cleaning up the minutes.
King Ranch package, the leather seats and all that, yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, no other, uh, discussion this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Uh, second item is discussion of the potential action on the bond proceeds and amount of five million dollars designated for the civil road plan.
Uh, I'll take the rest. I'll go up there face to face.
That's any much trouble?
Somebody, there you go.
Do what?
Hear that horn going off outside?
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, distant.
I got some jigging right there.
Thank you, sir.
Aren't we talking about just civil link, though? Is this, this is more than that, and it's all bond total?
This is just your whole, your whole sheet, but I think all of that was, um, what it was.
Oh. Okay.
I'm good, thank you. Yeah, I don't think this is what we're really talking about.
Well, it is.
This is your whole list.
It shows you what's left out of the five million.
Yeah, it just shows you, it's about number six down on your list, it just shows you that, how much, there was five million in expenses to date, is a million seven forty-one. And out to the far right-hand side, the million seven oh-one is your, a P O issued but not yet paid obligated. So you're about three and a half million obligated to date on that, out of the five.
All right, that's, that's what I'm curious about, then.
Three and a half out of the civil link?
Yes, approximately three and a half out of that is already obligated.
Really?
Because you paid to date a million seven forty-one, and out there in outstanding P Os is a million seven oh-one.
Well, according to what, I've looked at this weekend, it only totaled two and a half that we have spent, or allocated.
I balanced three fifteen, it could be off just a little, because I haven't gotten with life on all the P Os, to make sure there's not anything in that. But in that category that does say civil link, obligated is a million seven, and we paid a million seven.
Okay, that's, this is the question I got, is, uh, I know we're using it for overlay type work, correct? That's what it's for, overlay? Isn't that right? All right. And we're going by this, this, uh, kinda sorta, going by this, uh, civil link book that we paid twenty-something thousand for this book. When I got to looking at some of the projects that we've, that we've covered, a lot of them, most of them didn't call for overlay. And, and I'm fine with overlay being used there. The problem is that I see that you could've saved a lot of money if we'd have stayed, like, so many of them's called for Cape Seal, Cape Seal, um, slurry treatment or something, and then it would've cut that cost down in almost half a lot of those. And so, the money could've gone further through, through the county. But as it turns out, I mean, uh, I mean, I know it tickles you, Steve, but one point, like, six million is gone straight to overlaying roads there. And I'm, I'm glad, but there's not gonna leave much to go around through the rest of the county. And I'm trying to figure out.
What, is there, I mean, is there, like, did you start on one end of the county and work?
Mike, why don't you come up and work in here?
Well, I agree starting with one point.
I don't even know. I don't, I mean, I, I trust that the plan was put together by someone who.
Outside office.
Right, had no political, and, I mean, this was, uh, a, a plan that was supposed to be the fairest. And if it happened that my part of the county had, I mean, which I do have twice as many miles as you do, and road miles. And so, if you're saying, well, you got twice as much stuff that's gonna happen, well, probably so, because I've got three hundred sixty miles.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, um, a couple of things. One, I don't have a problem with the money.
Well, you just pointed at me and said, Steve, you got a million six.
No, I said.
Somebody, I mean, they gotta spend it.
For district four, then I reverted. I'm just saying, I don't have problems that if, if, in the same, you'd be saying the same thing if you just spent a million six in district one, three, four, two, whatever. And, and you got this sheet that shows that the, the money is almost completely gone out of five million. But what I'm getting at is if you're gonna go with that plan, like you said.
I have not told Mike to put asphalt on any, I mean, the roads that were supposed to be chip sealed or chip sealed.
I didn't say you did. I'm just giving you as an educational part to them. All I'm saying.
Move this along. We've spent one point seven million dollars.
Actually, what I'm showing, Jay, and I, and I'm not disputing this large figures. Uh, Steve's there, I've used one point six eight four. That's an estimated number that we got.
Yeah, I suppose this, yeah, one seven.
One seven, you can call it. And that's not completely through, so it's gonna be less than that, cause we, we overestimate our job a little bit to cover.
But you have another nine hundred thousand that's allocated for district three.
I have another nine hundred thousand that's allocated for district three, uh, on that.
That's getting done just right now, and it's.
It's just getting started because of the weather.
Right, the PO's been issued, so that, that's two and a half.
There's a bunch of them that have already been invoiced.
I guess I don't get where we already spent three two.
Yesterday, when I looked in the, the road thing, and I'm having it out with Mike, so I don't have.
Yeah, we had got to get it.
With the POs that will come out of there, and I don't know that there's anything else in that particular line as a million seven, as of yesterday obligated.
Oh, I thought you were saying we already, we got three two already spent.
Well, if you take, no.
Use all the POs.
Three.
Use all the POs.
Just three two.
Yes.
Well, what I'm saying is, I only have two five, so I think that's all we have is two five.
I got two point nine. I got two nine nine. I got two one.
Okay.
Well, I mean, if you add what's right here on this sheet, it comes to two nine nine.
I have to go through what you're looking at because.
Who, who put this together?
This, this is our.
You or Mike?
I did. This is our.
Okay, you're saying you got two one.
Right.
Well, I'm getting at, if you add what's on this sheet here that I got from your office.
Right.
It comes to two million nine nine nine.
Something like that, right there.
So, that's three million dollars.
Right. But I'm looking at what I've got POs issued. We issue a PO.
This shows POs, this shows POs, it shows invoiced POs. I mean, they've been invoiced and it shows POs that are still out, that are being worked on as we speak.
Alright, if you say so, Jared.
Well, I'm not looking at what you're looking at.
Obviously, some people have had this form and been over it a lot longer than we just got.
No, sir, I just.
It was emailed.
You, you hadn't seen this before, right now?
No, sir, I just, it was just yesterday.
This, this, no. I just saw.
Okay, yeah.
But I mean, what were you?
I got this.
I'm not buying that. I mean, you may not seen this form, but you've had the chance.
No, I've seen this one.
To be able to.
This one.
They didn't give you the stuff. When you're saying how much has been spent to this day and pointing my district, I don't look at districts. I look at the county.
This is what Mike, hey, this is what Mike sent us.
I look at the whole county, and I want the whole county to be fair.
This is what Mike sent us, Steve.
This is what he.
But those figures we're talking about this morning.
Let's see which one.
That's what I have. Email, what email, right?
That's what the email you sent out, what, last week or something?
Yeah, we're talking about stuff that's just today. But anyhow, or yesterday of this week.
You flip over here, it shows, shows, and shows POs. Yeah. See, Steve, this is the one he sent out.
I'm good.
This is the one he sent out, so.
Alright.
I'm not looking at, I was looking at a different sheet you were looking at, Jared. I got so many sheets on this, cause we changed up so much.
Alright, I.
So, we've moved on, so we're close to three million allocated. So, uh, out of the, the what I saw you sent to us, it, it had a one six from, from Steve's district and nine hundred from Brass District.
That's correct. And three, and then a spillway, but let me, under, to make sure, spill, the spillway part, is that part of the, um, the bond? Was it two different points?
Two parts of spillway, there's.
Two different, two different parts. One of them was done before the bond. That's three hundred thousand. The other one was two hundred thousand or something. There's only one of those that's in the bond.
Right, that, that we matched money on.
Only one of them.
That's, I wasn't sure. No, you just said spillway.
Yeah. Well, I asked Mike about spillway project. I thought that was the MPO, but it was the part that was actually overlay.
But what I, my, what I was getting at, had nothing to do with where money's going, was the amount that is. If you went by the civil link plan, it said, let's, for instance, it said, um, a road here, let's just get one here. Let's just say, throw one out here, um, Cape Seal, uh, Little Woods Road, just throw one out there, okay? Uh, it says, it require, it was calling to be Cape Sealed, okay? An estimated, I know it's estimated, from civil link was seventy-nine thousand dollars. But this one, now we're showing a hundred and fifteen thousand. But if you drop them down here to another, North Oak Ridge, sixty-five thousand is what we're estimating. But civil link, if you did Cape Sealed and surface treatment like it said in the book, it would be thirty-three thousand. So, my point, all I was saying, if we'd have stayed with that, we'd have had more money. We wouldn't have been overlaying everything. You had a Cape Seal, you could've overlaid more things throughout the county, is what I was saying.
And I, I can speak on that, Jared. I mean.
Yeah, I was, I was wanting clarity on.
I mean, we go in there and we evaluate these roads. This evaluation was done two years ago. I mean, roads have changed, you know? We go in there, we look at the road. If the road is damaged to the point that we can't Cape Seal it or micro it, I mean, we got a paving crew there. We've got to, we've got to do it, or we just leave two tents in the middle, not done, and walk away from them. And I know we all agree that we don't wanna do that.
But you're gonna overlay and just what things being called to be overlaid.
That's what Mike said.
Unless, unless we see it to be otherwise. I mean, that's no different than in Brad's area. We looked at a, we looked at a road. Me and Brad looked at the road there those days. There was no way to chip seal that road.
He sent out right here in his emails. I just got the.
It was beyond. They called for chip seal. We hadn't changed, changed the prescription.
I think we did, whenever we did this, to start with, that it was just gonna be a snapshot anyway. And so, unless we pay them constantly, come out here and redo our roads.
That's right. Dana, that's what Dana said.
I got you. I didn't get that.
No, what I thought was, was you get through the money spending we've got for the next two to three years, and then you come back and take a snapshot of where you're at, you know? And that gives you more reality of where you, where you at versus.
Everybody may say that it doesn't matter, but, but it does matter. We all want money in our.
Of course, of everything.
I got you.
You know, so.
Well, it did send to me an email. It was an email.
Yeah.
So, basically what we.
Hang on, hang on, Mike. Just a second. Let me, let, let, let me, let me get us focused and centered on one, uh, really important aspect of the bond proceeds in relation to civil link. I think we need to re-center just a little bit on that particular issue. Y'all may or may not remember that as a part of the discussion about use of bond proceeds, we asked our bond counsel for clarity on whether or not we could use bond proceeds for certain types of treatment that were called for in the civil link plan. Y'all remember that?
Yeah.
And we talked specifically about the fact that some of these treatments by design are short-term in nature. They're basically stopgaps to try to get us from one point to another. They're efficiency measures. They give us greater useful life of particular roads if we implement those. They buys time so that we can then use the benefit of time to help us get our budgeting in place so that we can then go back and take stronger measures, more long-term measures on individual roads. Our bond counsel clarified for us that we needed to try to make sure that whatever bond money we spent, we spent it on a treatment program that had enough of a useful life to not get us in trouble with the auditor. Remember that?
Yep.
Alright, so we wanted to, well, it's eight. We, we wanted to try to look at using bond proceeds that got us somewhere in the neighborhood of about an eight-year useful life on, on treatments. So, we, we sat down with Mike, Tim, uh, and I, and we started looking through individual, not, not all the way down to a level where you're talking about specific roads and distances and that type of thing. But just the idea that what we would focus on out of the civil link were roads that we could use the longer-term treatment plans for. Which meant that we were gonna have to move some of the priorities, some of the road priorities were gonna have to be moved around in civil link, for instance. There may have been a road that said, you don't need to do anything on this until you get to year three. But if we were gonna do anything in the short term on a road, we had to upgrade the treatment plan to get us the useful life. So, a road that probably could've waited another two or three years, just by virtue of efficiencies, got moved up the food chain with a higher priority treatment that gave us a longer term.
Right.
So, there, there needed to be flexibility in the civil link program where some roads that would've been waiting to year three, year four, they got moved up to year one or year two because we could use bond money to do it instead of Mike's budget. So, some of the issues about clarity and confusion may be related to some restrictions that we have on the bond pros, the use of bond proceeds. And I just, I wanted to get you guys focused back on that. It, it, it wasn't just use whatever money you wanna use and go do your treatment plans. It had to fit within that profile. And that, that's not an easy thing to fit within the civil link program necessarily.
I understand that, that part completely. And, and, but basically what it covers is asphalt, and I know that because, and so whatever road you thought needed to be asphalted, you could do it. My whole thing is, you got five million dollars from the civil link deal, and it's gonna cover asphalt. And, uh, after that's gone, we're gonna probably have a little problem doing asphalt because we're gonna, the money. So, that money I felt like should've been, and I thought that was understanding because we're not staying right by this road plan because we're, where it says Cape Seal, we're asphalt and where we're, you know? So, we should've, that money should've been concentrated with asphalt throughout the county. And it's, it's not, it doesn't appear to be doing that way.
Well, if you just look at.
Why, why don't you let me finish, uh, to where?
I mean, I can give you a breakdown. I mean, just like you're, Jared, I mean, you got a million eight, you know, is what we've got estimated according to the civil link plan to do in district one, you know? I mean, I took the budget numbers and I broke them down to the civil link plan. We're not, yeah, somebody's gonna get a little more than others and, and some's gonna, Jay's gonna get a lot less than everybody else, cause he just don't have that much on the civil link plan. Not, I mean, I'm just trying to manage this the best I can with the, with the call.
What, what, what is your, uh, I guess, path forward? What, what's the plan going forward?
Well, basically what we did, we took the county down. I mean, I've got a huge map that's got every overlay road that civil link did for the county.
Yeah.
Sitting in our office. Some of y'all seen it, some of y'all haven't. It's got every road marked on it. We took that. We went evaluating the roads. We took the culverts we had in hand, and that's where we got started. But we had to order culverts for a lot of these roads. We putting a ton of culverts in that's overrunning our budget and fix, trying to fix base repairs to stay with this five million. I have not used none of the five million to buy culverts or base repair.
No, I didn't figure that.
That's been coming out of our budget.
Right.
And, uh, so we've been, we've been doing all that out of in-house money. So, we had to use, we just started in the area. We had resources and material we did. You know, we actually started in Brad's there, if you wanna know the truth, where we started down there in bucket, and we worked our way out. But it's just like Brad. When I got with him, after he got elected, uh, he had two million dollars in a nest around bucket right there. Each, we'd sit down and talk before we started paving in that area. And I'm trying to do this with everybody, is I get to your area, sit down and talk to you, and go over the plan and ride the roads to make sure we cover everything. We just haven't got around everybody. It's been a bad year, and I mean, we've been terrible.
It's just now getting dry enough to start doing something.
Right. I mean, we just busted loose this week, really. I mean, we've been taking and doing at this thing all year.
He was with Brad, and, and you had two men, so I guess what you're saying.
What I did, what I did, what I did.
Supervisors decided what roads they wanna do.
Well, I just got with him and I said, do you wanna spend all your money in one area? His area is broke down in three areas. I've got his area broke down in three districts.
Yeah.
I said, you wanna spend it all in one? You wanna spend it all in two or three? I mean, we knew we had some roads bad. We had to go spend a chunk of his money right in one area. But, you know, we rode, once we, once we decided.
Indian man, that's all that right there.
So, you chose that, that, you prioritized those roads in your district?
Well, I mean, it was on the civil link plan.
Well, that's right.
It was on civil link plan.
On civil link plan, you're right.
On the civil link plan, district three. Brad decided to do those.
Well, I mean, we decided, yes.
Or y'all decided together, yeah.
I mean, we've been trying to do that road for five, four and a half years. I mean, it's been prepped and ready and, uh, it just deadly coming apart and getting worse and worse. I mean, just to a point when you spend an X amount of money on base repair on a road, I mean, you got to do something to it, Jay.
So, what's your next step?
I mean, we're right now, we're in area one, uh, y'all don't see it on y'all's list, I don't think. There's some check marks. Are y'all looking at the list I emailed y'all?
I don't have none of that.
I got that.
There's some little check marks. Sorry, I'm not a big computer owner in it like everybody else, but there's some little check marks. That means we have done work on those roads. We have prepped those roads. As our culverts have come in, that's what's made us move around in the county is ordering culverts and getting roads prepped and rigged. It's all dependent on asphalt plant. I had asphalt plant down for over a month. I couldn't get asphalt.
Well, that's what I want with clarity. And Steve, it's nothing, don't take it wrong, it's nothing to do with.
I did take it wrong. I mean, I did.
But I wish you wouldn't because it just was no different, just wanting clarity. And the fact.
We, you know, when we were doing the bond, I supported you and your district and everybody else, this is one county, even though you were getting about thirteen million dollars for state and county, it's all tax dollars. Everybody in my district pays taxes for the whole county, and like, and yours do too. I don't, I'm not jealous of anything going on wherever, and I have not instructed Mike or anybody else to change any road from the plan.
I didn't, I didn't.
If it calls for chip seal, chip seal.
I didn't, and, and I don't, uh, don't think.
But, I mean, that book.
Don't think I implied that. I implied that. I was just implying, if it had been spent in, uh, started out there and it saw that in.
But this is just March.
District three. District three. I'd have just, all I was trying to get clarity on how things, where the money is. Because, simple thing, five million dollars, see where we are with it, with it. I didn't know we really started much off civil link. So, when I got these numbers, that's when I looked at it.
I, I wanna get those numbers. Cause I, I, you said Dan gave it to you?
I forwarded right to you.
I, I just wanna see it, cause I.
Fitted, forwarded right to you.
I'd like to see them.
Y'all may not wanna hear, uh, any good news, but, um, I, I won't, I won't throw a little in there if I can.
I do.
That, don't lose sight of the fact that when civil link came to us with this information. that when Civil Link came to us with this information, we didn't have a bond.
Right.
We didn't have bond proceeds, we were staring at a treatment program that was by design supposed to fit inside of our regular road budget allocation. And so the bond allows us to ratchet and move up a lot of, some, some.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, but don't lose sight of this, Jay, the roads that, that have been prioritized within Civil Link to get a greater treatment program than they would've otherwise been entitled to if you're just following Civil Link by the book, those roads are going to last because they have to.
Ten years.
Because the bond says they have to, they're gonna last eight to ten years. So what you would have been spending in year four, five, six on Ashley Road for some sort of treatment program, you're not gonna spend that. So we need a recalibration of Civil Link to tell us, now that we've used the bond proceeds, where do we stand now?
I don't know, man, that's.
Well, what, I know, I mean, that's where I was talking to Jake, you know, a while ago, Craig, when we get through with the bond proceeds and some of these road improvements and stuff, I mean, I don't think we gotta go evaluate every road we got in the county, but we can go evaluate the roads that we've done, get them back in sequence on the chart. The chart's gonna flow and show you which way to go, I mean, I use this Civil Link thing as a master plan. It's no different from what Craig said, up until we got bond proceeds, I probably Chip Seal, Micro, and did some roads that was on the overlay list because they was in need to be done. I could Chip Seal them or Micro them that year and we didn't have to overlay.
Get to another year, Tony.
Get to another year, I mean, we didn't start the bond proceeding until October.
Well, look, man, I can mean because, we didn't even do Chip Seal and Micro until three years ago.
That's right, that's exactly right.
So, you know, we're stretching our dollars and I believe in it.
It's a good program, I think.
If you have Micro on your subdivision, you get a couple complaints, but it goes away and we're stretching our dollars.
We didn't anticipate, guys, that we were gonna have, quite honestly, nobody could've been, have predicted that we were gonna have a five million dollar impact on Civil Link, none of us.
Yeah.
That's the byproduct of a, an exceptional bond market that let us get to those kinds of resources. So it's a good thing, like, I told you, I'll tell you good news, I, I feel like it's good news that we've bought significant time and efficiencies and gotten some really improved, improved roads out of the process. The money hadn't been wasted, it's been used.
Just everybody up here, we all want the most for our district, you know, so.
That's why we love y'all.
But a lot, a lot of what I'm, I know, but a lot of what I wait on and moving in the area.
I wanna be fair.
This right here, y'all gonna have this, this is where I can't go, has to estimate all these roads. It's a lot of work to go estimate all these roads. And once they estimate them, they send it to me. They break it down and we make the decision what we're gonna do APO for. And we break it down, they ask for a request, but I can't even start that part until they get it wrote.
Right.
So they have to ride and estimate all that work that we've got laid out there, they riding roads that we're not even gonna do, you know, spending days.
Yep, so, so if you guys are, are okay, my thought would be, let's continue this discussion. We need to get real good, solid handle on numbers, exactly where do we stand? And get you guys reported up on that just as soon as we can get it.
I agree, at least once a month.
Then we can carry on the discussion.
They don't numbers on, for money coming.
Obviously, if there's specifics that y'all wanna know about your district, you gotta get that information and we, and we're not gonna stand in the way of getting everything we can to you.
It's not for the dead horse, but just so I know, going forward, what, what's your plan going forward? You obviously already started in District Four and you're working in District.
Well, we actually started in District Five and Two.
Oh, gee, thanks, man, yeah, you did.
I did.
Oh, it's spillway road?
Spillway road.
My little, so you put me first, thank you, man, I appreciate that.
But I started there, we ended up, like I said, when we ended up estimating that one phase right there in Brad's area.
Yeah.
We was working on another phase, I mean, I've got a crew that works north, work crew that works south. You know, it just, it was prepped, ready to go, you know, I mean, it was no choosing of who, who's what. I mean, I've been riding these roads, I mean, they're about to finish up with District One, uh, to give me a spreadsheet on what we're estimating to do down there, so I know what's going on.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're just daily moving forward, Jay, I mean, I, and I have not, you know, we've got our, I mean, we spent some money to some carryover stuff, like, spent some money spent going to some court houses, different things out of regular budget, you know? For asphalt laying, but I mean, we still got our in-house budget we have not touched yet. I've been trying to focus a hundred percent on bond proceeds, try to get rid of this, you know, to get down this road and get that behind me so I didn't have to worry about that right there and so how to get some extra money, we'll have it.
Money that you're spending on doing overlays currently in all through Civil Link, how much do you have annually for overlay, Micro?
Left in my budget.
What do we budget you, three million?
Three million.
Three million a year, so, so between that three million, you gotta do whatever Chip Seal, Micro that's left, or you probably won't do much overlay.
No, actually, much, actually, my Mike, my Chip Seals, uh, is, is a separate budget, Jay. I was looking at that yesterday because we're prepping those roads, getting ready for that.
Yeah.
I mean, we're basically got eighteen miles of Chip Seal we're gonna do this year, is all we're gonna be able to do.
And why are we all talking about this? That Indian mound ridge which is gravel, it was negotiated for a hundred and fifteen, well, it's gonna cost two hundred and twenty something to get asphalt.
What?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, but what happened there, I guess, we just underestimated when we saw with Pete.
No, I mean, I, I don't know.
That was before me, so.
I mean, I told Brad, he, he was like, what's it gonna cost, I mean, I had the estimate and I sent it to him, you know, all, uh.
Pete got us again?
No, why, why don't we let him pay a hundred if it's gonna cost us two?
Well, they, they, they paid a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and fifteen.
Okay, a hundred and fifteen.
It's gonna cost two hundred and twenty.
It's gonna cost another one fifteen to do.
Oh, so it's a total?
Don't forget that we.
Total two twenty?
Yeah. We horse traded two things into one decision.
That was your.
So the tax collector situation got horse traded in there with that. We arrived at a number as a byproduct of a settlement to work out all of those so we didn't have to have multiple things going on with Pete.
Yeah, but I thought the amount of money we got in rice check for wasn't substantial enough to complete the road. I didn't know we were shortchanging ourselves, why don't we ever do that? Why don't we take that deal?
I, I do know you.
We, we worked on an estimate and that was what the estimate was.
That's a big miss from, you know, estimated a hundred and fifty to two twenty, missed it.
One fifteen.
Yeah.
We don't have any requirement about when we go do the work. So as petroleum's moving around on us, we may wanna revisit when we, when we've finished that project.
The problem's gonna be now, is everybody around them except for the gravel road, they're gonna pay.
I forgot, my supervisor might have a question about that.